I'm just gonna mute the microphone until everyone sits down. Okay, Shawna?
Okay. Thank you.
I meant for me, just, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, me too, though my typing, I think, is annoying.
Don't worry, I can mute you at any time.
Thank you. Chris, I can't hear anything at the moment.
Yeah, I have the mic on.
Okay.
I didn't want to include any candid conversations, you know?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna keep the mic muted until the meeting officially begins.
Thank you, Greg. As long as I know who ends up calling in, that helps.
Can the person who's ending in 51, the number, please identify yourself?
Can you hear me?
We can.
If you can hear me, this is Marisa K. Weber.
And it looks like she accidentally disconnected.
Did she say it was, what was her name again?
She's a teacher from Rutland Town, Marisa K. Weber.
Thank you. I'm sure she'll call back. I have her spelling somewhere. There she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Got her now. Greg? Is that Kareen? Hey, Greg?
Yep, we're gonna, um, we'll go ahead and end open meeting, start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Welcome, sorry for the delay in the start. We just waited for the form. Approval of the agenda, I know, Chris, you said you had something for executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other changes? In the agenda, or can I have a motion to approve it?
I made the motion to approve the agenda.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I'll take full piece notes, even though we have our secretary on board.
Um, I actually could not hear who seconded the motion?
Karine. No, Kareen made the motion, Tim seconded it.
Thank you.
That's okay, just so you know, there's only three of us, so it should be easy to keep track.
Oh, good, all right.
Teachers, staff, community, questions, comments? Everything going good?
As well as can be expected, we're trying, we're, we're still pugging away.
I was gonna say, I know you have math now, but you can still talk.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move on to, well, it says finance, but... I know, Louis, can I delay you just a few minutes until Matt gets in here?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. We'll go on to the director's orders, did anyone have any questions? On the director's orders, I did approve them. And I have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve. The director's orders.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kareen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. John, just so you know. Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes of the special carousel meeting, that was a GURCU virtual, virtual meeting. That was on August 4th, we did have a forum there. Matt, Kareen, Tim, and myself. Pretty good turnout, better than tonight. So, because each district was, had a majority there, had their members there, we need to approve these separately. Do I have a motion to accept the August 4th meeting of GURCU?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Can you project your voice, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you project your voice?
I made a motion to approve. The many meeting minutes from the August 4th meeting.
Thank you, Kareen.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes of our last meeting was September 14th. They have to be, if we accept them, we have to accept them as amended. I did put in who made the motions, the ones that were missed, missing. Most, motion to approve the minutes of March 9th was Kareen, seconded by Matt. Those were unanimous, motion to approve the minutes of August 10th. Again, it was Kareen and Matt, that was unanimous. The resignation of David O'Brady, Matt made the motion, Kareen seconded it, that was unanimous.
Are you just going in, when I, what is, uh?
Yeah, I'm just putting them down, so Shawna can update.
Okay, okay, gotcha, I thought, no, I just wanted to double check.
Yep, and then we had a motion to approve the contract horizontal moves, and a revised contract for the Spanish teacher. Kareen made that motion, Tim seconded it, and that was unanimous. Motion to approve the extracurricular coach recommendations salaries. Motion by Kareen, seconded by Tim, that was unanimous. We went into executive session at 7:50, motion by Matt, seconded by Kareen, that was unanimous. Came out of executive session at 8:18. Motion was made at 8:20 by Matt to adjourn, and Tim seconded that. Everybody got any other changes? For these minutes? And I have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 14th.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just give that to you, just in case Shawna, I think, catches more. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Excellent. So, a few items discussed, obviously, on September 26th, the Governor Scotts and Dan French moved us into step 3 of the strong healthy start to our reopening plan. So before, there are a lot of, there weren't many major changes for us, because of our enrollment size, and just a kind of forward thinking in our buildings with our staff and our administration. We had a lot of the elements in step 3 already in place, so we had some, the key changes, obviously, both to step 3 will be, we can begin to look at how best to utilize some larger spaces than Rutland Town School, be it the cafeteria, the gym. I know that there is a kind of misconception that step 3 is back to normal. I kind of heard that from some community members, and while we would love to get back to normal, whatever that may be, we also have to be cautious, I think we've done a nice job of, you know, thus far, from a safety and health standpoint, of getting to this fifth week, knocking wood, and I want to make sure that as we continue moving forward, we don't want to just kind of rush back and be kind of reckless with the way we handle these situations. So, we are working with, you know, the union, with their administration, staff, on how to move forward in kind of a safe way. You know, the one thing that we discuss, part of that is, you know, throughout the course this year, we will be doing the perimeter, the health checks, the temperature checks, you know, things to make sure that, you know, individuals that are in the building, they are in a healthy state, they're ready to be able to work, to be educated, to be present. So those things will not be changing. There will be some more guidance from the state probably by the end of October, to, you know, a more updated starting healthy start, I think that will be more reflective of us beginning the cold months, what they may look like in terms of, you know, temperature checks, how we can handle things, but like, right now, we can utilize outdoor space, but I heard this weekend that there's a potential of snow in some of our areas, top of the mountains, so it's just, uh, this starts to kind of occur, like, where I guess we're there, but we just have to make sure that we have plans in place, that we don't have kids sitting outside when it's, you know, 20 degrees out, we're ready to go, so. Along the same lines, well, and I said this before, I think, you know, our teachers have done a phenomenal job, but I also, if you're messy, I didn't say that our teachers are exhausted. Our teachers have worked very hard to get us to this point, you know, in a variety of ways. They just, they burn the candle on both ends, and I think what, I just had a meeting with administrators and some union reps and some teachers today about moving forward, about how we can build a more sustainable, you know, workday. And I think it's important for us that we did a good job of, you know, getting the building open, get us this point, but I think, you know, moving forward, we just have to look at what the rest of the year is going to look like, whether, you know, in terms of with the in-person, with the remote. And I think it's important for us just to be, you know, mindful that we are meeting the needs of our community, our students, as well as our staff. So we are currently in a phase where we're reevaluating, we're taking a look at things, we don't expect any drastic changes right now, and I say that, you know, because we don't know what the future's going to bring in terms of with health standards, but we do know that the current model that we're in right now, which is a four-day person, and with the one-day remote, will continue through at least the first quarter, because the kids kind of evaluate, particularly as we move into flu season, and see where we're at. And for the next couple of weeks, we will be working with a variety of stakeholders, kind of build out a plan just for the winter season, but as well as get us through the end of the year, make sure that they say we meet the needs of all our stakeholders. Moving on to the open house, I think I can let Debbie and Sarah talk a little more about this, but obviously with, you know, conditions being as is, we've had to alter open houses this year, and I think it's our staff has done a phenomenal job of trying to, you know, think creatively about how, what it can look like, and they sell, I'm talking a little bit more about that there. I do want to talk about November 3rd, which is election day, there are two schools at RSU, where Rutherford County, one of them, went back to the polling place. So on November 3rd, Rutland Town School will be on a remote learning day, there'll be no in-person instruction on that day. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that, because we do the same thing at Proctor High School for multiple reasons, from a safety and health standpoint, obviously, as you have people coming in the building, you can't really screen everybody that comes through, and, yeah, like I said, we've done a nice job, we don't want to compromise all the hard work that we've done, but just being a little bit reckless on that day, so. We do have a remote learning model in place, that we do, you know, employ on Wednesdays, that we can use on the 3rd, but then we'll be back on the 4th during the normal session. And the last thing I just want to talk about is just the equity, the formation of an equity team. If you look back at, you know, there's legislation passed a while back, but actually, a task force which made some more recommendations about equity, diversity, inclusion, hopefully by the spring, in terms of standards to employ within our schools, but we also need to take a look at what equity, inclusion, diversity, you know, look like within our SU, our schools. So therefore, we're forming an equity team, which provides the board members, community members, administrative staff, all parties will be invited to be part of the planning process, but really take a look at some of the things we're doing well, and some of the areas which we can improve, and just as we kind of build that out. And that will kind of coincide with equity policy that is currently, you can take a look at in the GURCU Policy Committee right now, so.
Anything to Chris? Okay, well, principles.
Thank you. So, as Chris said, we will be having a remote day on election day. Masks assessments have begun the last couple of weeks, we have almost all of our students have completed them, our interventions have been great. At pulling our remote learners to have them complete those assessments. This month, we also were fortunate that we were able to offer hot lunch a couple of days a week to our students. That's a big deal, they've been getting almost the same thing all the way through spring, so there were some excited little kids that have a little bit of a change up there. And it's small changes that are occurring, just procedural things, how are we able for kids are able to come pick up their own lunch, so we're not having to deliver to everybody. Soccer has started, we were hopeful to have seven games, but Karine and Karin, you said, are mainly in a couple.
Today was the third game, right? Not in part third, we've had canceled due to kind of weather.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was the COVID outbreak.
Yeah. Right, so we're hoping to get seven games in, but it sounds like there'll be a few less than that. Tapestry has started here, in the cafeteria, we have about 20 students that are signed up. And we currently have 51 students that are running remotely. When we wrote this last week, we were at 57, so we have a few more that we welcome back, we welcome all remote learners back in person, we would love to have all of our children back in the building. So, yeah, about 15 have returned to in-person, I thought that was just a few weeks ago. So we have about 14% of our student population participating in remote learning. And then we also, Debbie will share, our new maintenance director, Kelly Traja, has done an phenomenal job getting our building open, clean, healthy, and there's a full page of stuff that him and our crew has done here since July 1st.
Yeah, there's quite a list of all the things that have happened, so I think you'd be pretty impressed with that, and if you walk around the building, you'll see that too. He's definitely a forward-thinking guy here, he has a plan for next summer. He has a plan on what's gonna happen with him, and trying to lay that all out, and be prepared. So, if you have any questions, I'm sure you can have me answer them. You know, you can always email him or contact him, but if you have any questions about any things, I'd have to answer as well.
Debbie, this one just jumped out at me, the five things that tested high in lead.
Yes.
So is that, because I know we've talked about this before, like, the testing in the water, like, nobody's drinking out of those.
No.
Like, what is, what are they, either like cooking or anything?
So, that didn't turn off, at this point, those particular faucets or bubble heaters that, that did test high, we followed the, what the state required, and those were all immediately shut down, or only used for hand washing. And he suspected what was causing it, it might have been a cloud filters on the aerators, so he, the state has agreed to allow us to retest those. So he's in the process of getting that done, and then we hopefully will be able to open those again.
And I think it was surprising, because they were newer faucets.
Yeah, they were the new ones, so we were like, what if it was that?
Really?
Yeah, so I think that's what made him suspect, and so we're gonna attempt to retest those faucets again.
Oh, awesome, good. That's strange. Thank you, and that is quite a list, I'm impressed.
Yeah.
I just have one question, it was just some confusion on the soccer, you know, some parents are really easily asking, some kiddos think it's a half-day on Friday from home virtual learning, some kids think there's no school at all.
This Friday?
Yeah, there's no school this Friday. There's no school at all. No, it's service, it's service all day.
They thought that in services in the afternoon, and for some reason, some of the kids thought the morning, the sixth graders, I guess, thought it was morning.
Listen, I tell my kids every day, you have brought me off. I don't, buddy.
On the 3rd, for election day, will be a full remote day, Wednesday will still be a half-day.
Wednesday will still be a half day, but we'll change that. We want to keep the state in check. So no one gets confused.
Awesome. Thank you. How many students were missing today that thought it was a holiday?
Oh, I had a couple parents call me. It's a joke, parents that just told them that it was a holiday. It happens every year, between kids and I have a bet. How many kids are they convinced their parents that there's no school today? I only had two that I'm aware of.
Okay, yeah, maybe they're the same two that I said, no. Really, there is school. I don't think they'd send the bus around if there wasn't school. So, right. And it is one of those holidays that some recognize, some don't, and I know it's confusing. Thank you very much. Moving on, personnel, resignations. We have received one resignation. It came in today, so that's why nobody has a report. We're going to discuss it in executive session, so I'm not going to ask for motion right now. I think that's the personnel issue that's going to be in executive session. Other than that, Chrissy gave us the vacancy for GURCU. I think ours was the only one mentioning Rutland Town was the temporary school subs. Okay. Yeah, so we do have some temporary school subpositions for the town school. As you can imagine, everybody is just statewide, probably countrywide. It's hard to get subs, especially at the last minute. So if anybody's interested in serving as a sub, they get in touch with.
Self or Wendy next week? Okay. Or Debbie or Sarah.
Okay, great.
Lot of options.
Okay, thank you. Contract recommendations, we do have three that were in your packet. One was for sports support staff, Nolan Woods. Extracurricular was Sean Dubos and Elizabeth McGrath. Do we have any questions or comments? Motion?
What is it for the mentors, second? What is it?
We're required to have, in our county school district, it's required to have mentors for new teachers. So these are teachers that are trained to be a mentor. And I know one of them is a mentor or teacher of another GRC SU. A teacher that works at another school, not Rutland Town. So it's in the contract.
And the amount, right? You know, they're.
Yeah, like they're different. Yeah, they're different based on experience.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the contract recommendations.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All approval?
Aye.
And Sean, just so you know, Matt has slipped in on us.
There's probably masks on. You can't see me smiling, I know.
No, I can't. Any opposed? Okay, that'll be unanimous. Vacancies to be discussed. We don't have the next one on Union. So you can just scratch that off, sorry. Chair's report. As everyone has guessed probably from the post and Facebook, Corinne has asked, she's going to resign from the board effective as soon as we can let her go. It would be the November meeting at the latest. You could do that one?
Yep.
We need it. And we are in the process. We have three applicants that we will, the board will discuss. We have to come up with how we want to do it first to choose one. So Corinne, I am mad at you, but there is no choice. It's not like I can say no.
But it's for a good reason.
It is, it is. She has a very good reason. Not that she needs to give one, no one does. But she will be missed. Seems like everybody on the board has different sections that they're very strong in. So I'm sure we'll find somebody to, if it's in the bud. If not, I'm sure you'll chirp in and let us know what you're doing wrong. So we will discuss that later for the vacancy for the filling. There are, like I said, three people that have shown interest. And the next thing I want to discuss is, it's one of those only in Rutland Town deals. We had one or two meetings in person for the school board. Then when I took over as chairman, I happened to have been out of state. So we had a virtual teleconference. And pretty much got, I got accused of trying to hide things. That's why we were back to teleconference. It is not, believe me, there's nothing to hide. We have, this is the second or third meeting we've had in person since then. There is concern out in the general public. Parents are complaining, they would like to see us go back and teleconference. We are, we're making the cafeteria journey by coming in. Yes, and I want to let anybody out there know that anybody that is in person, have masks on. The cafeteria is cleaned after the meeting. So I just want to ask the board, they're just saying, and they are right, very few people are allowed into the school because of COVID. And they think it's kind of irresponsible for us to come in once a month and dirty up the place and leave. So I want to bring it out to the board because there's pros and cons to both. I don't really care either way. I mean, it'd be different if we had PEG TV here and people could see us. Because right now, you're hearing the same thing, whether it's teleconference or we do it in person. This was kind of nice because after being isolated so long away from people, it's kind of nice to be able to see people again, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm going to open it up to the board to tell me what you think. Ken?
I mean, I under, I guess it's the first time I'm hearing of it. So I haven't heard that feedback from the, from the community myself. I'm not opposed to the virtual aspect. Seems like I've been in other virtual meetings and they flowed pretty well, you know? Yeah, I don't really have a position, really. I haven't, I mean, there's plenty of things that I think as a community we can be working through. I don't know if this is one that should occupy a lot of the conversation. But I'm not unopposed to going virtual. But that's, I don't see any hurdles with the technology piece of it or anything like that. You know, coming into, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't see any contentious conversations where I feel like the, you know, the dynamic and vibe of the room will warrant being in person. I know, I mean, the budget's going to be, it's going to be a long, long nights on, in front of a computer in regards to that. But like I said, I'm kind of, it's the first time I've heard of that, this particular.
I think what it is with some of the people sending their children back in, the ones that were keeping them home because of the worry about COVID. I think us meeting, I think it's some of those new people, could be some, I mean, I don't know, I don't ask names. But, and I do know that we are the only one in the supervised reunion that does meet in person. The rest of their meetings are all virtual.
I'm fine on virtual.
Okay. Matt, it doesn't matter what Corinne says, she's leaving.
You know, my opinion is that we're going to resume some kind of normalcy in our lives. And I see other boards meeting virtually and I just don't think it's proper. This board knows what my position is on all of this. And so I'm happy to continue the way we are, that's how I would vote. However, something happens in the community, and we're just starting to spike, we're starting to see something going on, some transmission here. Barring that, we just continue on the way we're going, that's how I will.
Ladies? How much of, what kind of problems do we cause by meeting in person?
I think I'm the one that has just given a couple phone calls in regards to that concern. And I sent them to Superintendent and yourself. And I think they're concerned that there is not volunteers allowed in the building, but we're having four meetings in the building. And I explained there's not children in the building during that time. I explained we can't sanitize our setting and now answering the questions, wearing masks. But I have had a few parents with questions, concerns, why are we the ones, et cetera.
And we aren't confined to this space, coming in that entrance. So people aren't wondering why you're building. And we're pretty much right here and it does get cleaned before you come in and after you all leave. So we're ready for the next day.
Corinne, your opinion does count.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I definitely prefer like the in-person. I just think that there's a lot of documents to review. I just, I personally think as long as board members are taking, you know, responsibility and are, you know, not traveling all over the place and, you know. I mean, I'm not going anywhere except for my house and to the grocery store. And I just think you have to kind of somewhat follow the governor's orders, right? How many people are allowed to gather at a time, I think, right? Coming from the outside, what is it indoors? 75 people indoors, I mean, it just is infuriating because I'm sure everybody this weekend saw, you know, the thousands and thousands and thousands of cars from all over the place. I think I saw probably 30 different, you know, license plates, everybody's coming into Vermont. You know, I think generally speaking, I think Vermonters are doing their personal responsibility of not traveling. And I don't know, I just, I just personally from this standpoint, and with my background in public health, I think it's going to be like this for a long time. It's like either stay home in your house for three years and do everything, or you kind of take personal responsibility, wear the mask, wash your hands, social distance, limit gatherings. I mean, that's my personal standpoint on it.
Like I said, I really, I don't care either way. It is harder for board members not to be in person. Because like you said, the paperwork. Now with budget time coming up, there's going to be a tremendous amount of paperwork. And I just am trying to figure out how to do it online and do the paperwork. And you have people talking, but you don't know exactly where they are, so you have to go through. But it is harder virtually as a board member. But I, I really don't care either way. Superintendent?
I'm fine either way. I do think there are a lot of benefits to being in person. I think, you know, we look at a ton of our pro calls are in place, you know, we take cautious steps. You know, people want to enter, the hand sanitizer, we're all perfectly distanced. And I think the, and like I said, we're confined to one location. So as we're walking all the way through the building to get to this spot, so it, you know, it's an easier cleanup. For instance, obviously, there'd be more concern if we had more than four, you know, people here in attendance. If we had, you know, 75, 80 people, we'd have to really think about, can we safely house the people? I think with, I think the issue though is, is we dabble into like an in-person and also a remote. It's just, and this is, you know, they do great for being there helping us up, but it's the quality of the interaction and the sound, the fact that it makes it very difficult for us to, for one, for people who are calling in to hear us or advice first for us to hear them. So I think if we could improve that on that end, you know, and I think part of just the facility which we're restricted to and we're limited to what that is. So like I said, I'm fine either way. It's nice to get out of the office. You know, I don't like sitting at my desk, you know, I'm just, I'm on, I feel like I want to keep your screen all day. And I do believe as we get to budget season, particularly, there is some work to be done. I think we can do it safely here. But like I said, I've been looking at meeting the meeting basis. If we have a large turnout anticipated that we could look at maybe. And then back at Greg, something to maybe figure out, just from a tech standpoint, just how to continue to improve quality for all attendees, whether it be in-person or in remote.
Yeah, we can get a wireless lapel microphone and one person talks at a time and we can pass it around. That's the easiest way to do the audio issue, is to just get a, get a lapel mic.
Yeah, I did hear some concerns last meeting that the people on telephone could not quite hear us. So we kind of repositioned the mic and hopefully that it's working better. Is it better for the people out there listening?
Much better.
Thanks, Louis.
Okay, board, what's your?
Does the board need it or do we just kind of?
No, I mean, right now, we did make head of a motion that we meet in person. So unless you want to change it, that will stand. But, okay, for now, we will continue, the board will continue to meet in person. Should there come a time when we have more than four or five visitors, we'll have to look at how to distance. But as I say, we come in the door, come directly into the cafeteria and then directly back out. Just to reassure the parents out there, we are not wandering the school. So if we do have anything cold, flu, or COVID, we're not spreading it throughout the school. Okay, Louis?
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, I forgot you.
No problem. So tonight starts the official discussion on budget. Tonight's discussion will hopefully not be too long of one. We're just going to go through the process, just get any board feedback on what they want to see in the budget process this year, any parameters, any priorities, stuff like that. And then next month, we'll start actually digging deeper into the actual budget. So in the packet was the budget timeline. There's two, two sections to it. There's the GRC SU and then the district section. At the last SU meeting, we went over this in regards to the SU and just touched upon the district piece. But just to go through it quickly, so right now, we're in the process of developing the SU budget. We'll be bringing the first draft to the board on October 28th for review. At that time, the SU board will tell us what direction they want us to go in, give us feedback. We'll make any necessary edits and bring back a final version to the SU board at the November board meeting. If there's any need, we'll discuss this at the October 28th meeting. If there's any need to have an extra meeting, that'll be discussed based on where the board wants to be and where we are, if they feel there's a need to have an extra meeting or not. So if not, then we'll be looking for an approval of the SU budget at the November board meeting. And the reason we have such a quick turnaround time on that is so that we have final numbers that we can use in the local district budgets. On the district side, at this time, I'm still pulling together information. I've sent a budget worksheet to the principals with the staffing and many of the expense pieces. They're reviewing that. And then we have a meeting set up for next week where we'll discuss school level priorities, what's going on, what things they need to change, edit, delete, add. And based on that feedback in that meeting, I will put together a first draft. I'll review the first draft with the superintendent and the principals prior to the November local board meeting. Based on that feedback, I will turn around and present a first draft of the FY '22 Rutland Town budget to the Rutland Town Board at the November board meeting. So we'll review it at that meeting, make any necessary edits. And then we'll come back with the second draft in December. And then the third draft in January and we'll be looking for an approved Rutland Town budget sometime in mid-January. And then after that, it's a matter of just preparing for the town report and preparing public relations material to get out to taxpayers and preparing for town meeting. So that's pretty much the timeline. So at tonight's meeting, I think we just need to have an open discussion as to if there's any certain priorities or parameters you want me to put into the first draft of the budget? Or do you want us to just bring back the first, the first? Or do you want us to just bring back the first, the best first budget we, the draft we can as we, as we see it? And based on principal feedback, current staffing, stuff like that. Or if there's any changes that you know about, like stuff you want to put in, stuff you want to take out, then you can tell us that tonight.
Okay. I imagine like every year, it's going to be the best budget you can present, the lowest budget you can present. And then typically that's after principal superintendent, school needs. Usually after or during the first budget presentation is when we get the list of wants, needs that we can consider. It's hard to sit here at first blush and just say what we need. But typically, I mean, we know which ones that we can't do anything with. I don't think there's any big projects out there that we were considering. But like I said, usually the principals are the ones that will look at it and see what is needed. We still have some uncertainty as far as our money goes, how much we're going to have to pay back. And we won't get a true idea what that is until after elections. Nobody is going to be a doomsayer and say that, you know, Rutland Town's got to repay or that you're going up three hundred thousand to repay for costs. Nobody's going to do anything negative until after an election. We've been in that position before. We've gone through, we've done budgets and then found out that we were looking at a twenty-five percent increase because the state did something. So I'm just kind of hoping we don't have that type of heart garing issue this year. Matt, we'll start with you. Anything different?
No, I was wondering what capital project it might have around. I'm not familiar with anything. I think we need to allocate maybe ten or fifteen thousand to the field, but we have to discuss that. And maybe not even that. It may be part of a bigger project. We've had a chance now to play it, there's a few soccer games out there. We've done some uneven services. Could be interesting to see, you know, what we can do with that. So I'm not even sure that could be a ten or fifteen thousand dollar project. I think it may be more of talking to someone that has knowledge of what took place in Proctor when they redid their field last year, as to what that took and what happened over there. So that may be something we look at if we keep playing on it the way it is. The one thing I know, the only other thing that I know that we have out there is the preschool playground. I don't think we completed that this year.
Right, that we do.
Yeah, we've got about, hopefully.
I did see that part in the plan.
Okay, I knew it was in there.
And then we like to, you know, still have a little bit more funds left to buy the rest of the things and put it in next summer. That's part of our plan.
We were really critical with orders last year on what we could do. And we're going to do what we can with what we have, but it's not a lot.
Yep. It's a small amount. Mr. Rowan also talked to me about, it's kind of nice being down here having the games. I mean, a lot of people think we came down here because we did this work on the field. That wasn't the case. I think they were bringing the games down here anyway, regardless of what work's been done around the school. It just happened to be a timing issue. But one thing that he spoke about, that he would make a request to the board is that we get a scoreboard up on the side of the building. And there'll be handheld remote control. I don't know what that unit costs, but I know there's been some chats. But so possibly it's not, you know, an entire field renovation or something. But it would be something along those lines of, you know, the scoreboard getting done, maybe spots and then to the trails. We're now at the point that everybody's looking for trail signs out there. I'm starting to see increased use, which is wonderful. We finished the Grover Drive segment over there. Tom Bray's did a wonderful job for us. And but now it's getting to the point that some signs are going to have to be out there, dug into the ground and, you know, things like that. So there's definitely a need.
Our maintenance staff is mowing the path.
Yep, and since I heard about that and new maintenance was out there and I thought that was great. And so now it's a matter of, you know, getting some signs out there. But someone's got to dig the holes, the posts, get the signs made. So I, I don't think an entire field renovation is in the cards yet. But certainly to start to smooth out on to that tier there, we can start together. So maybe it's with the school board and the scoreboard and the signage, stuff like that. But otherwise, the preschool playground, I think we need to add that. And maybe look at what are our small capital projects over the year. But I couldn't see anything else standing out there. I know we're waiting for paving, but that's coming in from the town.
Right.
I couldn't see anything else.
Thank you. Rain?
No, I can't think of anything. Tim?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, and like I said, these issues are brought up. There's nothing that can come forward that we haven't discussed. It seems like every year, it's who gets first place and depends on how the budget looks. So if you could, just added enough information for you, Louis?
It is, yes. So I will, I will work with the principals and we'll try to come up with a, a budget that will meet everybody's needs.
Awesome. I have got one question for you, Louis. I noticed that the state now has come up with additional funds available for schools for the havoc and issues they're having to replace or fix. Can we apply for any of that seeing how we just went through it?
Are you referring to the, the HVAC money to Efficiency Vermont?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yep. So each school has been working with their own representative from Efficiency Vermont and seeing what projects are, are needed in the school to increase the efficiency of the ventilation. So Rutland Town does have a grant agreement with Efficiency Vermont. I do have it here in my bag. I'd have to pull it out to see exactly how much it's for. But it's for, for testing, control, controls and fixing anything that's necessary in order to have better airflow in the building. So I'm just pulling that out.
Yeah, that's on, on the list, the maintenance list.
Right. Yeah, so I know that we had done quite a bit of work in the last year or so. And I was just wondering if there was any recompense we could get for it.
Yeah, so we're definitely getting, definitely getting a grant for Rutland Town through Efficiency Vermont. And I, Deborah, I don't know, or Sarah, I don't know if you know specifics while I'm trying to pull out the grant agreement. But it's.
We received a grant from them for fifty-five thousand dollars for updating some of our electronics. So what we did in the past, we replaced and updated the mechanics. And now we're connecting them all so that we can get control over each unit ventilator within the building to get better control of air. We've investigated, you know, our exhaust system and getting that all online. And that's what our director may have been working on with Efficiency Vermont. Had them come in and do a survey and then they came up with this plan together. So we've been working very closely with that.
Oh, awesome.
Yep, and I do have the grant agreement, yes. So, so the total project cost is sixty-four thousand. The grant amount to Efficiency Vermont is fifty-five thousand. And we're looking to put the remainder of the cost, which is approximately nine thousand, through the CRF COVID funds. And the main pieces of the grant are to install CO2 sensors in each classroom to monitor ventilation and enable future energy savings, customize scheduling, two-way modulating heating valves and replace controls on twenty-two existing classroom unit ventilators.
Awesome. Any questions or comments? Okay, Louis, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
Awesome. You have a good night. Sorry to have to make you hang out with us.
No problem. Have a good night.
You too. Okay. Moving on. Hell, they get old. Okay, we have policies in front of you. We have three policies. They're down in a certain order, but none of them, the, the two of them are not new. The only one that is new is if you want to pull it out, the driver's ed for Rutland Town students. We currently have no policy on driver's ed. In my thirty-five years, I've never been requested to pay for driver's ed. It's always been the policy in Rutland Town that you give driver's ed through your high school you go to. The only reason this was brought up is we do have, I believe it was a new resident who have, has a eleven-year, eleventh grade student, not in any of the local schools, if I'm not mistaken. Not in, I think it's Twin Valley or something like that. And they would like us to pay for their son's private driving lessons. We have never done it. It would set a precedent. So talked to Chris, we've looked at it. The proposed, or the, should say, the policy in front of you is one that's, this is Little Town, Wells, this is Wells policy. And pretty much they're the same for Wells and Middletown. It's up to four hundred. They are recommended that they, if the school they attend does not have driver's ed, that they take it within our school district, whether it be with one of our sister schools that has the program, whatever. And so this is just out there. We have nothing. I mean, it could be as simple as Rutland Town, you know, knows that their students will take driver's ed through their high schools of choice, period. But for questions of people that are coming in from other areas that are used to just sending in a bill, this bill was seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I just cringe thinking of paying that for all our high school kids. I mean, we just financially, that was outrageous. But that is a private driving. But so I'm going to open up the floor and see what you people think. Lance?
Can I clarify what the question is? Are we talking about the policy or are we talking about?
We're talking about the policy. We should have a policy. What do we think that policy should say? I mean, we have never run into this ever. And even to the extent that we had an eighth grader that drove him to school, to school the summer he graduated finally. We didn't pay for his driver's ed either.
This is me smiling.
I know, I see you.
I, I see it as really minor issue, so.
It is, but you know, we, we should put a policy in there only because this has been holding two or three weeks because I just couldn't believe it when poor Louis called me and said, what do you want to do with it? Needless to say, it has not been paid.
I, I'm fine with the policy as written. It's provided at the school that the person has at. If there is no ability for it, then we can cover it. I believe that's what the policy says.
Should we add in like the student's age to be more specific? Like how old do they need to be to be able to take a driver's ed course? Do they need to be fifteen?
Yes.
So I think it's important to probably.
Well, and that's why we've never run into it.
Right, so, right. So is this person that is looking for the bill older than fifteen?
He's in eleventh grade.
Yeah, so that doesn't fall in our school. I don't understand why they're.
Because they're town residents.
So typically, our kids go to high schools that offer driver's ed.
Right, right.
This student is homeschooled, but is getting high school credits through Upper Valley, something like that. So they have to take private driver's ed.
No, what if?
And it doesn't go through that part of the school?
I guess they, I don't know if that's an option.
Because you have to be in person.
Yeah, so a hypothetical, I guess, not really where we're at now. But I know the driver's ed has been getting pushed off, right? Because they, you can't do virtual driver's ed. So they're the back, they're the back dog. So what if students say, well, I can't take it this year. I can't take it for eighteen months when I turn sixteen and I want to go take a private.
They would still be in school, so they would still qualify. Right.
This policy's already got problems then. Because if the school's not going to operate, then we have to take it outside.
Well, I haven't heard of anyone having trouble.
I just, they haven't figured it out yet.
Some private schools, I'm sorry. I don't think I know if I can come. But some private schools don't offer driver's ed. And through Rutland Town, as you know, students can choose to go to a private school. So I don't, my sister went and we had to pay for a driver's ed personally for her to have it. You know, so there's some schools that don't.
For everyone that is wondering, you included, this one, what it basically says is if you are going to a school, high school that provides it, that's where you should get it. If the student's school does not offer driver's education or if the student is homeschooled, reimbursement of four hundred will be made to the party, parent or guardian of the student to attend a public or private driver's education. That is what, like I said, Middletown Wells does. It's their responsibility. Basically, they would have to pay anyways and then we would reimburse up to four hundred. But I don't think it quite stresses enough that, well, if the student, the student's school does not offer. I mean, it's pretty clear cut. It's always been your high school offers a driver's ed, you take it there. We don't reimburse anybody. So this one, and I never did really think about the homeschoolers before, shame on me. We've never even been asked by them. But, and I don't know what the going rate is. I know it's less if they say Proctor has a driver's. I think Proctor and West Rutland both, right? And Polkley, they all offer driver's ed. So if it's one of our Rutland Town students and being a sister supervised reunion school, we should be able to get them through that. So as far as the actual process right now, I have no idea, but everybody's in the same boat.
So I believe that Wells Spring Policy says that they have to take it within RSU, otherwise there's no reimbursement.
Oh, okay. What do you think? Should that be part of the policy?
I like this policy as written. I don't have an issue with covering the seven fifty.
Yeah, I do.
The only, the only reason I say that is it's not offered with homeschooling. And the other students are getting it at school, this person's homeschooled, they're within the district and you can be treated equally or at least get something instead of zero. So if ones are, the ones at school are getting it offered free and the ones being homeschooled are getting zero dollars, that's not treating them equally, so.
But they went ahead and I supposedly, I don't know if he's had the, if this is a bill after the fact or if. Usually you just don't present a bill. You find out what's included, not included, what had been or taken it from one of our sister high schools. But no, just to be sent an arbitrary bill is not in the taxpayer's best interest in anything. I'm sorry that they went through this. Hopefully they has not taken it, they have not paid that bill. I mean, if we go through this and say reimbursement up to four hundred because he's homeschooled, then they would at least give four hundred towards it, which is fine. That's, that's a policy. But, I mean, and it shouldn't be a hardship if he's homeschooled and a Rutland Town resident to take the driver's ed out of one of our local high schools.
Do we have on the time period, what's going on?
I didn't look at it that closely. Do you remember, Louis?
Do I remember what?
Is the invoice like broken down, Louis? Like, does it say, is it just like a flat rate bill or does it say like numbers? You know, kind of timed out and specific?
It was a flat, flat rate bill. And I, and I'm pretty positive that has, it has already been taken. This is after the fact.
And the time requirement is pretty specific in terms of hours of driving and all that stuff, right? I mean, it's very specific. And I know that like at the high schools, you know, they'll take students from other, other schools if they have room. And that sometimes that happens and sometimes that doesn't happen. So there's always a waiting list, I know at Proctor, and it was when I was there, so.
And I talked to Louis today about this, about how to expand the opportunities that Proctor, West Rutland, Polkley to accommodate these situations. So there, if there's a Rutland Town resident who, for one reason or another, at their home, their, their school does not offer driver's ed, that we do have the capability to offer them a spot that they were waitlisted. I ask, Louis, does the bill appear legitimate? I mean, there's no one disputing that this is an actual bill, correct?
Correct. I mean, I haven't looked into it that closely because we weren't actually at to the point to pay it. So I'm assuming it's legit.
And so I would just, just get this moving forward, subject to verification, and make a motion to approve the driver's ed bill. Would you like to move on? I'd make a motion. I'd make a motion.
Are we, are we approving the bill or are we approving the policy?
No, the bill, subject to verification.
So you wanna pay the $750 bill?
Just the motion, the policy.
Okay, I just wanna.
Take care of that one.
But I think he said he already paid it.
I know.
He already paid it?
Do I have, I'm sorry, what?
He paid it?
No, we have not paid it. I have, I have not paid it. I wouldn't pay it.
All of the doctors, the family paid it.
I have a motion on the floor to pay the $750 bill for students for driver's ed that they've already taken. Do I have a second? Motion fails due to a lack of a second.
I'd make a motion to approve the new policy for driver's education for Rutland Town residents to be properly warned of all that we're doing.
For the, for the new policy?
For the new policy. So the motion would be to approve the new policy.
I would second that.
The, the only question, I, I agree with Matt, but I'm just wondering, how did we come up with this 400?
That is.
The going rate, like if we, I'm just wondering, the 400 and 750 is a pretty substantial difference. So I'm just wondering.
I don't know. I'm going by that is what last year, and I think they, these policies were put in place last year. Were 400 and that's what Middletown and Wells did.
And they know like, how many companies are locally, like, everything about driver's ed sometimes.
No, I think they're basically, like I said, one of them said you must take it from a sister, um, school.
I mean, does 400 seem reasonable? Do we know that that's kind of the rate of what they are? I, I just, I don't know.
I know, I mean, that seems to be what they thought, they, when they passed their policies last year. I don't know.
I believe Proctor's paid, I believe Proctor charges 350.
Okay. So Louis, do you think getting that bill at 750, that that seems a little bit steep and a little strange that it's that much?
Uh, well, I mean, if, if it's a private driver's ed program, I could see it being that much because there's less, maybe less kids in the program. Where if it's taken at a public high school, there's more kids in the program, so they're spreading the cost over a, a larger amount of people.
All right, so then let's do the, let's do the 400. You stopped at that, right? So do we wanna go ahead and vote?
Any more discussion? You have any discussion? Now, of course, this is not going to affect tonight because it is a policy. It has to be warned a couple of times, but we can go ahead and reimburse up to 400 based on our discussion tonight to that one person, right?
Correct. And I can look into that rate and if there's a change in that rate, we can, if next will be, then if you vote to approve, you approve that new rate.
The all-state, um, driving instruction in Rutland is 675. So that's a local company.
Listen to Mr., I'm on my phone looking crap up at the.
Yeah, well, that's helpful because I don't even know.
It is.
It's hard to make decisions when you don't know anything about the company to.
Well, and that's just it. That's why the, their Wells and Middletown say, come to the school district first, supervisor union first. And we will fit you in. I mean, we're talking homeschoolers or private school that doesn't offer it. You're not talking a handful of kids.
Right.
So, um, chances of them getting into one of our, and thus saving the district money and keeping them alive. So.
I think we can vote on it. Matt made the motion, you stopped it.
Okay, I, I can't take the motion tonight. Sorry.
Yeah, I know.
Do you wanna revise? Yeah, I know.
Policy and procedures on the.
I'm sorry, do you wanna change that to pay the bill $400? Reimburse that bill 400?
Sure, I'm not gonna make a motion to, uh, pay and, or pay a reduced amount of $400 towards the building sensitivity.
The other, the other motion, by the way, in second, has been voided.
I'll second Matt's.
Matt's new one. Okay, any discussion on reimbursing the resident 400 towards that driver's ed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will go ahead and warn this. Chris is going to update, look at the prices. And at next meeting, we'd be able to approve the policy. Also in your packet are two more policies. These are pretty much the way they were right in our, I don't think any changes have been made from our, um, regular Rutland County Supervisor Union. One is on the board member conflict of interest. The other is just board meeting agenda preparation. Do I have any discussions, questions, changes that you would like looked at? And just to remind you that the policy, GURCU has a committee that, policy committee that we're serving on. And there's another virtual telephone conference. Okay, hearing done. We'll go ahead and we can vote on those at the next meeting. Any old business? Any new business?
I was curious what's happening. I don't know if it's okay to talk now.
Pardon?
Is it okay to talk now?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The, those entrance tickets. I have not been sending my kids with them for about the last four weeks and nothing's happened. Part of the reason I haven't been sending them is, um, there's, to me, if I'm sending them to school, I'm certifying that they are healthy. And they're getting their temperature checked when they go in. And they, my kids have said no one collects them. And so it, I just stopped doing it. I'm not saying that's right, just admitting that I have not been filling it out every morning. So my curiosity is what does happen to them? And if that's something that you're continuing with? And if it is something you're continuing with, what about doing like one sheet that you have for every student that the parent says for the remainder of the school year? I certify, I will send my child without a temperature, without traveling out of state, et cetera. And then keeping that in their file instead of having all these papers that people are basically wasting. Especially if they're not going anywhere. But it's also increasing transmission because you're taking it from the house and bringing it into the school. And then it's mixing, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I understand the idea of that behind it, but I don't understand what really happens, yeah.
Yeah. So we don't bring them necessarily into the building. How many people are in the bucket? And they go in a bucket and then we take the plastic bag and I bring them to the nurse. And the nurse goes through all of them, bags them, um, and keeps them for two weeks. And we can't not allow kids, if they want an admission ticket in. So I agree, I've asked this question even to our nurse. Like, if I, if they come in, I take their temperature, but that's one of the procedures that we're, you know, I think our COVID coordinator, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, he suggested we have that admission ticket. We did amend it to include a reminder about traveling. So I, I've asked the same questions, you know, like, what's the purpose of this? Can we do this digitally? You know, it seems like a lot of wasted paper. It's a lot of manpower, like 20 extra pieces of paper and silly stuff like that.
I have to take.
And it's not safe for the nurse to get those every single day. Yeah, she has to go through them. Gloves and goes through them.
And now if your children have been attending and haven't been bringing them.
We can't deny them entrance. So a lot of parents don't. And I have similar parenting, I'm like, I start to not see what happened.
Well, the first few days, no one collected them. And so I was like, all right, I guess it doesn't matter that much.
Yeah, they're in bucket that entrance, so like, yeah, that's what.
Maybe my kids didn't know where to put them. I, to be fair, my, my, I have a different entrance because my youngest goes in a different door.
Yeah.
And so it's a little bit confusing anyway. So then when they started going through the reg, the older kids went through the regular door, they didn't know where to put them. So they bring them to class and then it, it just, it, and I, I didn't really like the idea from the start for the reason of trans, you know, extra chance of transmitting something and, and what have you.
We could open for an app.
Well, an app or, or I still think you could have a form that you require all parents send in and you keep in their, the children's record with their emergency numbers. I don't, you know, I, I don't know.
We're required to ask this question on a daily basis.
Oh, yeah, it's part of the day.
Yes, that's part of, part of the protocol. So, I mean, I know it's in the vein and as a parent, I understand, but it's another thing. So I think the state's been trying to do a digital app for a while now, supposed to be released before the start of school. And each week they say, let's just email and we'll, we'll, we'll get you, and like done the beta. And people are waiting. So I, I think we're looking at, you know, the minute we can go digital, obviously, it, it, it's still, I know it's a pain, but that's part of that perimeter, that screen is those questions have to be asked on a daily basis.
It still would be safer to do it by an email than to do it by paper.
Can you talk about that, like the Google form that parents fill out or something?
It doesn't have to be an app.
I think that makes a great conversation for you coordinator and everything. Thank you. Thanks for your honesty. I just want to see what happens. Our next meeting will be November 9th. It will be an in-person or teleconference. And that will also be the beginning of budget season. Maybe that's why I never get any hunters on my, this is kind of the same time as hunting season. But anyways, that's near and here and there. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Do I have a second? Matt seconded, it is 7:20. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for attending.
Shawna, are you all set?
Yeah, quick question though. The woman that was just speaking, she was not identified.
Oh, ma'am.
That's Tina.
Can you just identify yourself, please? Did you hear that?
No.
Tina Keshava.
I heard Tina, I didn't hear your last name, I'm sorry.
Keshava.
Wanna spell that one for me?
K-A-E-S as in Sam, H-A-V as in Victor A.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, appreciate your help tonight.
No problem, have a good one.
You too. Night.
Night.